All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, February 15, 2024. I would ask that you join me in a moment of silent reflection, please. If you would please join me, stand and pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Roll call.
There is one person joining us remotely via phone. If they could please announce themselves for the minutes.
Good afternoon. It's your friendly neighborhood IT guy, Don Weakland.
Hi, Don. Thank you. That is it, sir.
Okay, executive session announcement?
There were no executive sessions held.
Okay. Public comment for the Commissioners meeting only. Okay, we're going to have what trail public comment at the end of this Commissioners meeting. I do would like to say that we're going to try to do some ground rules before we begin the meeting. I want to establish procedures for today's meeting for the trail meeting itself after this agenda. Today's agenda has two sections, a public comment, first will be related to the agenda under the unfinished business. Public comment related to the trail should be held until the second public comment section later in this meeting. Any individual who wishes to address the board must be a resident of Blair County. Non-residents must own property in Blair County or represent a business or organization located in Blair County. Please state your full name. You will have three minutes to address the board. The board will not take any formal action or vote during the public comments section. Unfinished business.
So your first resolution for adoption today is Resolution Number 80 of 2024. It's approving the submission of the Blair County Early Intervention Program Report to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Human Service for fiscal year 2021 through 2022.
Any comments or questions? May I have a motion to approve?
So I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Resolution 81 is approving the commercial alarm article of agreement between the County of Blair, Department of Emergency Services, or 911E, and the various agencies, companies, and residential alarm monitoring customers in the annual amount of $300 for the period of 7/124 through 6/3025.
Any comments or questions? May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Resolution 82 is approving a contract between the County of Blair and MetLife Legal Plans Incorporated to offer optional legal plan coverage to enrolled employees at the rate of $18 per employee per month for the period of April 1, 24, through March 31, 27, at no cost to the county.
May I have a motion to approve?
So I'll second the motion. You second it?
Yep. Comments or questions? All in favor? Aye.
Resolution 83 is approving the revisions made to the existing emergency closure policy effective February 15, 2024.
Comments or questions? May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
I'll move.
All in favor? Aye.
Resolution 84 is approving change order number three received from Frances J. Palo Incorporated for additional work to Bridges 87, 88, 89, and 92 for the Box Culvert Project in the total increased amount of $20,258.11.
Comments or questions?
This is one of our last payments for the completion of the four bridges.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Resolution 85 is approving the 2024 Fort Special Event Schedule and a 50th Anniversary Logo celebrating Fort Roberto's registration as a national historic site to be included in the Fort Roberto brochure.
Any comments or questions? May I have a motion to approve?
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Resolution 86 is approving a contract between the County of Blair on behalf of Fort Roberto and Barash Media for a quarter-page four-color advertisement in the Blair County Chamber as outlined on your agenda.
Comments or questions? May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion. All in favor? Aye.
Resolution 87 is approving the master services agreement and statement of work between the County of Blair and Momentum ECM LLC for implementation of a new records management system, LaserFiche, and migration of legacy content from current system on base in the total amount of $139,040 as outlined on your agenda.
Comments or questions? Comes from Mark Funn. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Resolution 88 is accepting the 2023-2024 PCOR Loss Prevention Grant Award in the total amount of $22,596.
Any comments or questions? May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Resolution 89 is approving a proposal received from Empire Communications for upgrading a new access control system for the adult probation satellite office in the total amount of $16,326. I just wanted to make a note, it's actually not a new system, it's just upgrading the current system.
Comments or questions? May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion. All in favor? Aye.
And lastly, Resolution 90 is approving a proposal received from Empire Communications for adding a new access control system for the District Attorney's Office in the total amount of $6,270.
Comments or questions? May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion. All in favor? Aye. Any old business?
None.
New business other than trails?
No.
Okay. That concludes the Commissioners meeting. The next Commissioners meeting will be held February 20 at 1:00 PM. We are now going to start something new. As a Board of Commissioners, we are always seeking input from the people of the county. We decided we trails is a big issue at the moment. A lot of talk about trails, so we decided our first discussion, open discussion, debate that you can participate is, is in the trails. I'd just like to read something to get us started. As all of you are aware, the 9/11 Trail has been established as a national trail which will connect to the 6 to 10 Trail in Holidaysburg and the Lower Trail in Williamsburg. In August of 2023, Governor Shapiro established the Office of Outdoor Recreation, appointing Dr. Rainier, I probably messed that up, but I can't say it, to oversee the initiative. A report compiled indicated in 2022, Pennsylvania had the eighth largest outdoor recreation economy in the country. It created 164,000 jobs and adds $17 billion to our economy. In Blair County, we have the Altoona Water Authority, who is currently developing 15,000 acres for the use of trails for hiking, mountain biking, equestrian trails, and trails for motorized use. There are further plans to open and develop even more water authority land for trail usage. Locally, the Alliance, formerly known as ABCD Corp., and the Chamber have also seen the value of trail development. They see the economic impact this would have in our community and see this as an opportunity to bring people to this, our community. In addition, we have communities like Bellwood and Doug Brown Township Manager, who also see the benefits of having outdoor recreation, who are also taking the initiative to develop trails in their area with plans to connect to existing trails. Although we have many dedicated groups doing great work, there's no central point of contact. We feel to assist in the growth of this initiative, we're going to discuss today, should we create an authority to be the point of contact, to work with everyone, to obtain funding in the way of grants, and create a plan on how to promote and connect and enhance everyone's efforts. I would also like to add that in Armstrong County, they opened 10 miles of new off-road recreational trail running through Armstrong County. Another 4.5 miles of trail will open the following month. The new trail section will be part of more than 100 miles of continuous off-road trails through the Kiskey and Allegheny Rivers and Red Bank Creek. I would also further state that we will, I don't know if it'll be today, we put out and the Altoona Mirror teamed with us to also put it in the newspaper. We asked for public comments. We've received more public comments on this issue than we ever have. We have 25 here to read at some point in support of, and we have three that is non-supportive. So we don't want to take your time right now, for those of you who want to make a comment, if we have time today, we are going to read each and every one of these. If we have time today, we will. If not, then we'll read it next Thursday. With that being said, if anyone would like to step to the podium, please feel free to come up and give us your thoughts. Yes, sir. And thank you for coming, everybody.
Hello. My name is David Hayes, and I'm actually with the National Side-by-Side Association. I'm the legislative liaison for them. But I am also part of the founding members of ERA, which was developing the six-county multi-use trail system that ABC Corp. has actually taken over. I'm also the ATV advisor for State Rep Gregory and State Rep Schmidt. But I'm more or less going to be talking about ATVs, but I want you to know, to me, all trails should be just multi-use, so everybody can use them. I want to throw some numbers at you real quick. $11.7 million of economic impact, $13.1 million of non-local residents' spending for the year. This was all numbers from Potter County that developed a pilot program up there for ATVs. They sold actually 5,255 permits for that area. The reason I want to bring that up, Blair County has 5,840 registered ATVs in their county. DCNR figures one out of every four is registered. Between Blair County, Cambria County, and Clearfield, which is your main area right here, you have 20,765 registered ATVs. A study was done with non-local residents coming to visit, like up in Potter County, and I use Hatfield big time down in West Virginia. They figure an average person will spend $150 a day when they come to visit to ride. I'm trying to think of some other areas. The MRF, everybody calls it the MRF, the Water Authority Property up there, that has been shut down, but a lot of people would love to get back into riding up there. And I threw a quick survey together, got a quick hundred responses. You've got people that are willing to pay $50 a year, $20 a year, just to go ride because they rode that area since they were kids and their parents rode that area. And some of the stuff you might not know, the ROLA Act actually has amendment in there now that actually includes motorized ATVs, so it helps remove the liability for you. Your C2B2 grants are actually, a percentage of that is actually supposed to be used for motorized vehicles also. But like I said, you've got a gold mine up there with the Water Authority Property. I've got pictures if you'd like to see that when we used to ride up there. We call it the bird's eye view. You're not going to get a view of that just by walking. Of course, I'm sorry. Then, of course, your train lovers love that, where they can see the trains. And that's another, we actually thought about seeing if we could do a business like that of just taking visitors around as a tourism thing, and they'd pay big bucks to do that. Them train people are crazy like that. So like I said, I actually was talking to Somerset County. They actually called me down there to talk to them. They actually are creating an ATV initiative committee for Somerset County because they want to jump into making the money off the ATVs down in that area also. So I'm here to help. I do a lot of work. I talk to Sherry with the Planning Commission all the time, too, so if you need any help with anything or any suggestions, I'm free to help you guys.
We appreciate your input, and thank you very much.
Okay.
One second. I got one gentleman coming from the back.
My name's Eric Oliver, Snyder Township resident. Fully in support of this trail effort. Just keep in mind that we've got a lot of areas of the county that could, from Canoe Creek to Snyder Township to Bellwood to the Water Authority Properties, everything could use a connectivity issue. And there could be a whole group of trails put together that it could be a group, it could be a whole county-wide effort. So very even supportive of it, and I'm willing to help wherever we can.
Thank you. And I think that's what we recognize. We've been out, all of us have been out. We've talked to these groups, and there seems to be a lot of really good things going on in all these communities. We're just trying to get, it looks like there's a need for connectivity, like something needs to come together where we can start planning to connect these trails and stuff like that. So we appreciate your comments, and I agree with you. So, yes, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Jennifer Barefoot, and I'm with the Rails to Trails Organization. I've been with the Rails to Trails Organization since before it was a rail trail organization back in 1988. One, thank you so much for putting this meeting together. Thank you everybody for coming. All trail networks have to come together. We started out here, and the Lower Trail was the first privately-owned rail trail in the entire United States run by volunteers. We've grown. We are known as a gem. There's so many potential trails out there. In the 1990s, in the Blair County Strategic Plan, it's already all mapped out there. Southern Alleghenies, it's already been mapped out there. As you said, we're part of the 9/11 Trail. We're part of the Trans Allegheny Trail connecting us to Pittsburgh. But there is a network here in Blair County between Bellwood, all northeast, south, and west areas needs to come together. So yes, we are in full support of having the county get a person that can coordinate all of this. We've gotten stymied where we developed the Lower Trail. We no longer can do those things. We were able to get all the grants. It's harder for us to get grants now. A private organization, we can't apply for them. We have to apply through each municipality and go through them, and it all has to be filtered through each of this. They no longer will let us handle our own grants. And so by doing this and bringing everything together would help astronomically from ATV use on the ATV trails, mountain biking trails, but the Rails to Trails, the network is already, it's already been mapped out. And so we ask and thank you for your support in bringing this meeting together, and we're here to offer our support if we can get this all pulled together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
First, I want to say my name's Gary Lingafeld, and I'm all for the Rails for Trails. I hear talk about using it for other than just bicycling. I'm a hunter, and I hunted in there for years, well, about 40 years above the horse shoe curb. And it's about safety. We're encountering problems in there. I've been in there in rifle season. People are coming through riding their bikes with no proper orange on or anything. I personally see a safety issue there. What I would like to suggest, the Army Corps of Engineers down at Raystown Lake, it's been on the news, they adopted a plan where you shut down just for two weeks, just for two weeks during that rifle season. Yes, the rest of the year is 50 more weeks for everybody. And as long as they wear orange, I don't know why they can't be in there 52 weeks a year. But it's definitely a safety issue. I experienced it personally myself. So I just wanted to put that out there. I'm all for getting out there for recreation, whether riding bikes, walking, riding motorcycles, hunting, whatever. It's there for us all to enjoy. It's called common respect. That's all I have to say. All right? Hope you consider that.
Thank you very much, and I think it's, I think it's a good point. My wife and I are, we do a lot of trail hiking and biking. I can personally tell you, I was down in Canoe Creek during hunting season, and we had a shotgun go off very, very close to us. And it was concerning because we were in a very wooded area. We didn't feel any BBs or anything like that, but it was still, it was a concern. So I think when we're moving forward, I think that we need to look at this globally. So I think that your point's taken. I've written that down. I also want, I also want everyone to understand that we're looking at this globally. We've talked to several groups about the trails, and it's not going to be limited to just one thing. It's not going to just be hiking. It's not going to just be biking. You know, we're, we're looking at equestrian trails. We're looking at motorized trails. You know, there's a belief out there, and I think that the numbers will show, that if you're, this is something that draws people into the area. If they're looking to move here, if they have outdoor areas that they can enjoy, if they have children that they can get out, hunting places that they can go. And I know that Water Authority and the discussion I had with them, they are working with the Pennsylvania Game Commission. They have a very good cooperation with them, so I think that that's, you know, something that we look at. So I just want everyone to know that we're not looking, we're not looking at an individual group. We're trying to look at all of them because we want to incorporate all of them. Someone said here earlier about a multi-use trail, and I think that those are on the drawing boards as well. So everyone's trying to look at this globally. It's not us. This is the group. This is the people who've done it. All we are is just a conduit. We've, we've heard, we've listened to all of this, and we're trying to help moving forward with that. So with that being said, I think there was another gentleman who wanted to speak, so.
Commissioners, again, I'd like to applaud you for taking this initiative and looking into this opportunity for the community. I'm a member of the Glendale Lake Snowmobile Club, and our name is somewhat of a misnomer. We actually are a trail organization, and we do multi-modal trails over several counties. We've, we are very active in the Glendale area, Prince Lutzen State Park. If you have any history of that area, they actually had two trail systems there, one in the north and one in the south. The trail systems were not connected, but we did maintain the northern section as a trail adopter there. During the period of COVID, we actually designed and built a connector trail connecting the north and the south of Glendale Lake and that park. And for that, and that's a multi-modal trail. That's just not for snowmobilers. That's for hikers, bikers, cross-country skiers, horseback riders. And we're very proud that we were able to accomplish that at that park. In recognition of that, and again, just kind of, Glendale Lake Snowmobile Club, I'm very proud of what we do, and I'll circle back to that point. But in 2020, DCNR, for the whole state of Pennsylvania, not just this area, the whole state, awarded us the Volunteer Group of the Year. And so, and again, we weren't just doing it for snowmobilers. We did build a trail that connected Glendale State, Prince Lutzen State Park to Black Michigan and State Park. Due to some game commission regulations, it's not multi-modal. It's only snowmobile. But all the other trails that we've been working on have been multi-modal. Multi-modal. Sorry about that. We have more ambitious plans than that. We wanted to connect Prince Lutzen State Park to Blue Knob State Park. We put a plan together. We drew up the plan. We worked with many groups throughout the county to put that plan together. And as an organization, and I think as Jennifer indicated, there's only so much you can do as an organization, and we hit a roadblock, and we couldn't go any further than that with it. So this is a tool that trail groups in Blair County needs to connect, as I said earlier, the Clearfield County trails. It's just something that needs to be done. I'm also on the Blair County Chamber, which now is a new name, Transportation Committee. And again, that's been the very hot topic at our chamber meetings, just the importance to move forward with recreation and trails. So it's also seen very important from a business perspective. I did reach out to some people with regard to this. I do have a letter from Allegheny Township Supervisors in support of this, which is a current dated letter. But I also have letters previously from senators and House of Representative people in various municipalities who supported the trail that Glendale Lake Snowmobile Club was attempting to put together five years ago that kind of stalled. But I just kind of wanted to show you the general support of those, of that idea. And just one further comment, in planning the trail from Prince Lutzen State Park to Blue Knob State Park, we just came across all these historic, so much history that was kind of buried on the mountain, for lack of a better term. But there's a huge story that can be told about crossing the Alleghenies, the first frontier. There's just a whole lot on that mountain that's right beside where our proposed trail is. And so the whole history aspect of that is huge, and again, complements what the county's doing. And did you have any questions? I don't know if, I covered a lot there.
Could you just tell us your name? We're trying to keep track.
I apologize. Randy Green. Any other questions? That one was easy.
You got it right.
I got that one right. And thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Okay. Mr. Ikas.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Very nice to be here this afternoon. We greatly appreciate the opportunity to be here and for you holding this meeting. My name is Mark Ikas. I'm the Executive Director of Explore Altoona, the county's official destination marketing organization, and a property owner in the Tyron Borough. Explore Altoona continues to utilize hotel tax revenue for the strongest ROI within the fully integrated marketing of the county's vast variety of visitor-targeted experiences. Outdoor recreation and trails specifically continue to be an extremely strong component among this vast variety and have huge potential moving forward. To provide some concrete examples, we're very pleased to share that Rails to Trails of Central Pennsylvania has been awarded a total of nearly $20,000 in marketing assistance from the Tourism Marketing Grants Partnership over nine grant cycles in a collaborative effort of the County of Blair and Explore Altoona. Explore Altoona participated financially within its 2021 Destination Marketing Investment Budget as an exclusive destination marketing partner with the September 11 National Memorial Trail. Explore Altoona provided the match money for the County of Blair's peer-to-peer grant award from DCNR in the amount of $10,000 for a Trail Town Study completed by McCollum Development Strategies. The application was submitted on behalf of the county by Allegheny Ridge Corporation. Explore Altoona assisted in holding three Trail Town Assessments in partnership with McCollum Development Strategies and Allegheny Ridge. Assessments were conducted with community leaders and the public invited in the boroughs of Dunkinsville, Holidaysburg, and Williamsburg. Explore Altoona partnered with Allegheny Ridge Corporation in co-hosting a Trail Town Workshop in 2019 as well. Outdoor recreation and trails specifically are consistently highlighted as an asset in seasonal marketing campaigns including print, digital, and broadcast, annual visitors' guides, and in ongoing conversations with travel writers, content creators, and influencers. As one example, tourism on the Great Allegheny Passage drives $121 million in annual economic impact. Spending by visitors yielded an estimated $19 million in tax revenue, with $8.7 million in tax revenue going back to state, county, and local governments, and it supported nearly 1,400 jobs. Among best models across the Alleghenies region and across the state of Pennsylvania, the establishment of a municipal authority is to be commended to oversee outdoor recreation and trail development initiatives as a proven model which should be explored. We applaud the efforts of the Commissioners thus far, and Explore Altoona stands prepared to continue its aggressive marketing efforts in this fashion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mark.
My name is Ed Dunnehu. I am a volunteer with Rails to Trails, former president and former board member for a long time. I worked for several years trying to develop the trail from the Lower Trail at Flowing Springs into Holidaysburg. I was successful in getting one trail management system right to use the trail.
Goodbye.
And there's a second piece of that. I want to get into some specifics, trying to get the Lower Trail connected into Holidaysburg. There's a second piece of trail. It's about a mile long. It's an old railroad bed. It's been vacant for many years. It's a non-standard lot. Nobody can use it. Nobody can put commercial on it. Nobody could put residential on it. But we can't seem to get that piece of property. And if we had that piece of property, we would be able to have a share-the-road arrangement between Canoe Creek, the Lower Trail, and into the Holidaysburg Borough, and more share-the-road into Canal Basin. I think that's going to have to be a priority when you start this new position and I, we all fully support. There may be an alternate route that can be found to get across the river. We've lost three bridges on Juniata Valley, two swinging bridges and the White Bridge. The cycling community used those many times to stay off the very, very busy Route 22. We were successful in getting the underpass in, so we avoided that Route 22 to get the Lower Trail into Canoe Creek. But now getting it into Holidaysburg, I think is going to be a critical, critical issue. Whoever, hopefully we support this job and whoever, hopefully you're successful in getting it approved. So that, that I think will be a good jumpstart for getting connectivity into Holidaysburg, Canal Basin. I know there's some people working in Dunkinsville to get it up to six to 10. So that would be my plea for everybody to get focused on that specific area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think this is one of the things that we as a Board of Commissioners, and I guess this is the reason why we're here, is that we've, we've had a lot of people come to us. And like I said, we recognize there's a lot of really good things going on in this county, but there's no connectivity, if I can say. There's, you know, like hearing of a piece of land. If we have an authority that people can funnel this information to, we may be able to act on it quicker and we can plan. So, you know, there's a lot of ideas. I think one of the things, components that we're, we're missing here and hopefully we can, can help is having the communication. If there's a focal point with an authority that has people on it, that this is, you know, this is what their passion is, that we can facilitate and help, you know, move this along. So I greatly appreciate your comment. Yes, ma'am.
Hi there. I wasn't planning to speak, but I feel like I have some knowledge that may be helpful. My name is Emily Evi and I'm a Blair County native. And I have lived here all my life. I did go to Juniata for a hot minute and came back. I most recently was working with the City of Altoona as their Community Engagement Specialist position in the last year. And I also attended the PA Downtown Conference, well, PA Downtown Center Conference, where statewide organizations met and discussed issues like this. And I also helped with the City of Altoona Comprehensive Plan and spoke with hundreds, if not over 1,000 people about the city and Blair County in general. And what I can tell you is that trails were a common thing that were brought up regularly to me. I don't know if it was a matter of being at pop-up events and talking to people within the community or just doing the surveys for the comp plan. In addition to that, I heard someone mention connectivity. Something I think that would be very important to note is that that connectivity should match with infrastructure such as sidewalks, crosswalks, and bike lanes within the local cities, boroughs, and townships that the trails connect to. And lastly, I have observed, just like you, that there are many initiatives like this throughout our county that are going on, but they're often siloed, doing their own thing. And I would behoove you, as someone who's noticed this trend, to make sure that there is an overarching group, committee, or institution that would ensure the success of this program. And obviously, I support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Hi. My name's Carl King. I'm a board member of Rails to Trails of Central Pennsylvania. Have been since 19, well, been involved in that organization since 1988. I'm also a board member of the 9/11 National Memorial Trail, which was signed into law by President Biden in October 22. Both of those trails pass through Blair County. We feel, first of all, we want to thank the Commissioners for taking interest in trails and outdoor recreation and outdoor economy. We feel that the economy of the outdoor recreation can add to Blair County's overall economy. And we feel that in order to do that, there needs to be an organization, whether it be an authority or some type of formal organization, established at the county level to organize and coordinate the efforts of all the volunteer organizations that are active in Blair County. We see a number of trail development activities and benefits to the outdoor recreation economy in Cambria County and Center County and Somerset County. But in Blair County, there is no coordination of the individual volunteer efforts that have been ongoing. And we feel that without that kind of coordination, without that kind of county effort, that Blair County will lag behind as it has been doing for a number of years. We applaud the Commissioners' interest in trail development and trail activities, connectivity throughout Blair County. And we feel that now is the time, if the time has not already been somewhat behind. We were one of the first rail trail organizations in the state and we're lagging behind now because we have no coordinated effort at the county level. We feel that that is necessary. And we, as well as the other volunteer organizations in the county, are more than happy to, to work with the county coordination that is developed. We feel that that is necessary at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl. And thank you for your many years of dedication to the trail systems. Thank you.
It's been my pleasure.
Yes, sir. Blue suit.
Hi. My name's Doug Wolf. I'm a Blair County resident. I also didn't come here planning to speak. I'm a colleague of Randy's at the Glendale Lake snowmobile club. And I want to make a few comments. I've done business development in a number of states, in a number of communities. When I hear the word authority or commission, when you develop in a place like Washington County, Maryland, someone comes with a business card and it says chief. And that person's job is to facilitate your project. They don't drive the project. So I think here we have groups, they know their trails, they know their needs, they know what they're looking for. They don't need someone running it. They need a chief who says, I can solve that problem on that one railroad line, et cetera. So I'd ask us to think broadly on not a county-run, we'll decide what the trails are and how they connect. Because all the energy from these trail groups will never match it at a central level. But we have to facilitate helping them accomplish their goal in the bigger picture. The other is, I would recommend, 99% of the people that utilize these trails and woods love this part of Pennsylvania. 1% will leave trash, cause problems. If we accept that as a county upfront and provide places to dump trash and pick it up, make it a little easier to be a good citizen, instead of people saying, oh, hey, put the trails in, and now they're a dump. Because someone will dump and a thousand will use it terrifically. Also, I want to reiterate, enormous amount of money is, we're looking at what we can bring in, what we can save here. That's what Blair County residents travel. They travel to ride snowmobiles. They travel to ride bikes. They travel to ride their ATVs. So, and they would sure as heck rather be able to access our spectacular woodlands around here. Thank you very much. I'd support the project also.
Thank you very much.
I'm ready to make a comment.
All right.
We were sitting here right now. You guys are going to just let, let me talk the whole time? I appreciate something Doug said a lot because I think one of the things we, I think we've all been kind of throwing around in our minds is, is it an authority? Is it a county department? You know, what is, what are we actually talking about here? But I think, you know, to your point about just needing someone to facilitate, I think that helps, you know, is, is interesting to hear in terms of how would an authority function versus if it's, you know, one person's, so I appreciate that.
You'll never be able to match the knowledge and a lot of the people who want their trails.
Don't leave, wait, 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 wait. I have a question for you too, along those same lines. I think we're all thinking. It's interesting what you have to say. And in my mind, whatever we would create would, would include a representative from each of the groups, from each of the trails. Because yes, they know their trails. They know the best place they could connect to the next one. They know what facilities they need. You know, do you need a little pavilion someplace? Do you need a trash can? Do you need restroom? And, and they would certainly be the ones then that would be a big part of this. I don't know how many there are, but if there are 10 of them, then that's, that's your first 10 members, right? But do you know, I mean, Jennifer had made reference to the fact that as a private organization, they really can't get grants and things. I was going to say, did you, do you also find that that is the case? And if so, if the grants are only going to be available, if we have some sort of a authority or county, if the organization, does that impact your thoughts?
I have no expertise or knowledge of how that functions.
All right. Well, I'm misunderstanding.
You can sit down.
Yeah, just go away. I think, thank you.
One second.
I think one thing too is, one concern I had was, you know, with our retention rates and, and, you know, we've had our advertisement in the mirror today about how many openings we have. You know, turnover, if it is a county employee, one, you know, like a single county employee was a concern for me, which. So I think that factors into like which direction we go as well. Because we want to make sure that there's continuity and that, you know, we're able to continue this once we start it.
And one, one final comment and then we'll move on. An authority isn't run by the county. The authority is independent. So, and that authority would be made up of people who represent different portions, at least in my vision. We would want to capture people who are passionate and about the trails, whether it be snowmobile, ATV, equestrian, hiking, biking, all of the things. We believe that that's important and that would be a makeup of an authority to make sure that everyone's represented and every voice is heard. We would not run that. Alls we would do is we could create an authority and that authority, and the word authority has the authority to do things. We can help them through grants and things like that that would be available to the county. But I just need you to understand, I think you brought up a good point, is that we, it wouldn't, we wouldn't run it. We don't want to run it. We have enough to run. So, but I thank you, sir.
James Patterson, Logan Township. One of our objectives at Logan Township was always to provide the most recreation we possibly can for the residents. And way back when in 1990, that was one of my campaign slogans, increase recreation. Mr. Green, who spoke earlier, I've been in touch with Randy many times since we graduated together and played Little League Baseball, all that. So his heart is into this. I applaud the Commissioners for bringing everybody together, like this group here. I see so many people here, all for the same reason. Everybody has their own little trail and everything, but we need to communicate, we need to put everybody together. And I think you guys have basically the great foot going forward by communicating, involving everybody, creating an authority, putting everybody together, putting all the heads together. But at the same time, when the authority does get together, I think they should look at other counties, other states such as West Virginia, as far as multi-use trails go. So that it's not limited just to a certain amount of people, whether you're bicyclist, hiker, walker, or snowmobile, or, you know, four-wheeler. I think it should be used that every possible aspect of looking at these should be able to be used. Many years ago, everybody mentions about the trail down Waynesburg. Mr. Staveley actually owned that property many years ago. He used to work with Rick. And he developed that trail down there. I guess he eventually sold it to Rails to Trails, but it was, it was fantastic down there of what's going on. So it's, it's rather amazing. The Commissioners, and I'll once again applaud you for putting this meeting together, bringing all the thoughts together and bringing the important people here and just the average residents here to say, hey, we're in support of this. Says Logan Township Supervisor, I am in support of this. And we'd be happy to step forward and help you guys out with anything we can. Mr. Green and I talked about a actual possible trail coming up over the Horseshoe Curve, which was, you know, Blair County is beautiful, but that is an icon in Blair County. Everybody wants to see the Horseshoe Curve. Going up over the Horseshoe Curve somehow, utilizing those trails, cutting across the Portage National Railroad bed, over to Wopsey, connecting to Glendale. It all sounds great. It's going to take time. It's going to take communication. This is how we get started. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jen. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. I'm trying to get to everybody.
Like a couple of other people, I wasn't planning on speaking today. Since COVID-19, mental health has been in the forefront of everyone's minds. I've heard economic plans, keeping Blair County money in the county and getting visitors into our county. One thing I have not heard is the benefits for mental health. I am speaking specifically about veteran suicide. Commissioner Kessling, you're not aware, but in June of 2021, my brother, Lieutenant Colonel Danenberg, retired, committed suicide. As an area, we have the potential to assist our veterans, not only in their psychological needs, but in their sociological needs. Having people who with shared experiences, hiking, ATV, horseback riding, taking care of their horses. Thank you. Did I say my name?
Yeah.
We know you are, Harold.
And I live in Frankstown Township.
Thank you.
And thank you very much. And we're sorry for the loss of your brother. Again, it's another component. I think that the trails, you know, for my wife and I, we spend a lot of time on the trails and we're on the trails, we think and we talk. When we're at home, we're too busy doing housework and we're too busy doing things that we need to do. But we find when we go on the trails, it's our time and we find that we, we mentally dump. We just, we talk to each other and we get to know each other. So again, I appreciate you bringing that up. It's another component of this. And so, thank you. I appreciate that. Yes, Jerry. I know somebody.
Very nice people. Our Planning Commission, also Logan Township President. I was in a discussion yesterday with Frankstown Township regarding their DCNR grant that they have, updating the Phase 1 of their community park at EC Town. During that conversation, I had expressed to the new township manager, Henry Fones, that there was a public meeting today regarding trails. He had stated, and I'm allowed to state this to everybody, so it's on public record, the township is very much interested in taking over the White, the White Bridge. So there is a connector piece that everybody's been talking about. And he had mentioned that his understanding is that has been expressed before to the county. So I just wanted to get that out there, that they are in favor of taking over that bridge and getting that connecting piece worked out.
We'll talk further about that.
I'm glad to hear that. It actually came up before the meeting. Do you think anyone's going to say anything about White Bridge, so?
Yeah. So since that gentleman said it, I wanted to kind of get it out here. So I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that.
Yeah, we've been talking about White Bridge quite a bit and, and this has been a subject that.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. So for any, the rest of the people in the, in the audience, this is Sherry. She's in the Planning Commission, and this is one of the things that we believe, that if we have an authority, this is an avenue that we work with Sherry. She is one of the individuals that helped us out a lot, as well as municipalities and boroughs here, by finding, seeking, and getting grants to help this. So, she's accessible to us. It's one of the things that would be accessible to the authority. So, this is, that's another area that we feel that, you know, we would be able to help as a county with no cost. It's just a, a service that, that would be provided, so. Anybody else for public comment? Yes, sir, the hat, or ma'am, I'm sorry.
My name is Rhea Vano, lifelong Altoona resident. I just wanted to voice my support for the trail initiative and the authority that would be overseeing all of it. I wanted to just make the concerns of myself and some of my friends who also ride bikes known that one of the issues we face with the existing trails in the area is safety, namely from cars. A lot of them will cross into or over busy roads with no protections, and these tend to be the same roads that are lined with various white crosses and memorials for people who were injured or killed. And, so one thing I just want to make sure is a priority for this initiative is just that safety of the riders is taken into account, especially if, as mentioned earlier, there are any sections that share any state roots or stuff like that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jane.
I'm Jane Sheffield. I live in Holidaysburg. First of all, I'd like to say that thanks to the county for working with DCNR to develop the Blair County Trail Town Program, a document. In the document, which was written by Kathy McCollum, who was one of the premier trail town people. She, I think she pretty much invented that, that program in Pennsylvania. And one of her, one of her most prominent recommendations was to look at the development of a Conservation and Recreation Authority. And we have a neighbor who cannot speak, Chris Petner and Company, who's been, is going on his 10th year as the Director of their authority. His predecessor worked there for 18 years. And Cambria County, I'm not gonna say they make us look bad, because I think we always look good. But they really have shown us what can happen when you have a recreation authority. The, these guys build trails all over the place, you know, in Cambria County. They have volunteers who are like guerrilla trail builders. I mean, they have people who, you know, who live and, and work and retire and give their time to trails because there's leadership. And in addition to that, Blair County, doing, because of the work of the Planning Commission, Sherry, you know, they're, they're gonna be coming up with a menu of items that we can address in Blair County. Southern Alleghenese Planning and Development Commission, they all, they, they also have recreation-related work that's gonna bring a lot of options to the table. So I think the timing is right now to, you know, to take that step and take advantage of the momentum, the opportunity, and the research that has been ongoing. And I would just, you know, comment that even though Cliff can't speak, I would encourage anybody after this meeting to, including, you know, our, our news folks, to ask him some questions and, you know, get, get some comments about how it works elsewhere. Because he's the one who's been leading our adjacent county for many, many years. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Jody Wallace, and I am the Vice President of the Fort Roberto Association. As you know, Fort Roberto being a Revolutionary War historic site. But maybe what you didn't know is it is home to the most unique and varied trail systems in Blair County, and we're still working on some more. And I know Commissioner Webster has let us know that recreation, trails, places like that, they cost money. Yeah, okay, they do. But let's really look at what trails, what recreation in general brings to the county. They bring people, and people come to recreate. Let's just break that word down, recreate. They're recreating their bodies by hiking and biking and skiing and horseback riding. And you guys forgot kayaking, that's important too, and fishing. You know, all of these things take place on trails. So they're recreating their bodies through exercise. And as the young lady over there mentioned, trails are important in recreating your mind. It is a way to just relax, get into nature, let your body just move. It's a place of spirituality. See, and that's important too. It's a place to learn. Go to Fort Roberto. You can learn about anything, from plants to history to the solar system at Fort Roberto. Who'd, who'd have thought? It's all, trails are also a way for us to be with each other among like-minded people. It's also pretty low impact on our, our environment. So, the fort, just the fort, brings in people from all over the world. We have visitors from England and Germany and France. We've had people from almost every state. We're still working on, what, Wyoming?
Hawaii.
Hawaii, yeah. Well, we'll get there, we'll get there. And where are these people who come from out of state, stay? They stay in hotels. They bring in taxes. They bring in money. They're shopping, they're buying gas, they're going to our shops, they're, they're buying food, they're in our restaurants, they're bringing in money. So I guess although trails and public places like that do seem to cost money, in the really long run, they are value to our county, to our community, to our world. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jody raised a good point, because we do have a designated water trail here in the county as well. So, that was one form we hadn't talked about yet.
Juniada River, oh, did they have a branch?
My name's Renetta Dermer. I'm a former math teacher at Holidaysburg Area Senior High School. But that was in my other life. Now I have the best job that I could possibly have in the world, and that title was grandma. Unfortunately, my two children moved away from Blair County, but the grandkids come here. And they, but my, my children, of course, do visit. Not as often as I'd like, but they do visit. The grandkids come here every summer for a week, each grandchild. And the first thing they say is, when are we going to the trail? They all have that, they're all, whenever they come, they're allowed to make a list of things that they want to come and do, and then we draw those, so there aren't arguments, who does what, when, and all that stuff. But of course, the Rails to Trails does include a stop at the Lowry Creamery, and that's a big incentive to, to get there. Now, having everybody come up and speak sort of reminded me of a funeral, when unfortunately, the minister, whoever's conducting the funeral, says, would anybody like to make a remark? And you're waiting, oh, too many people are coming up and making remarks. So I'm gonna try to make this as quick as I can, okay? It was interesting, as I had my notes, how many people supported the same thing. So I won't issue the list of terrific activities, the, the trails and the, and the different outdoor activities that Blair County has, which I feel is the greatest place to stay and to live in Blair, in the world, as far as I'm concerned. The gentleman mentioned about hunting and accessing hunting, that it would curtail the hunting. I have a brother who's handicapped, who's at this point of his life confined to a wheelchair. He doesn't hunt, but the trail does give him an opportunity to get outside and to be in the world where you could, he could, doesn't necessarily hike, he can't hike, but walk, progress through the trail. But the trail would provide access for hunters and fishermen to do those activities, which would be almost impossible without the trail. Over the, somebody mentioned about COVID. I was amazed how many people were out on the trail and actually explored different areas of Blair County during COVID. And my husband and I certainly were out as much as we could, because that time was not good for people at all mentally. So we usually try to use the, the trail at this point midweek, because it's really too crowded over the weekends to actually get around. The number of fishermen we've noticed has increased dramatically, a whole lot more, and people from the local area, but also people elsewhere. I just think by trying to extend the trail, it would provide more access for more people and getting more people involved and getting more people outside. I always think mathematically, and I'm sorry about that. I, I shouldn't really apologize for that, but you say you were a math teacher, and people say, ugh. But anyway, I do think in, in terms of different mathematical things. Right now, at my age, I'm trying to live as long as I possibly can and keep my mind sane. So I'm thinking of outdoor activities, being active and being active outside equals a longer life. Also, thinking, with this in parentheses, outdoor activities include biking plus hiking and biking and fishing and hunting and whatever. And that equals, that sum of those equals better mental health, better physical health, better psychological health, and better spiritual health. So, whatever, what you're doing is terrific. Try to get these activities together. We're hearing all different possibilities. Let's see what we can do and make Blair County even a better place to live. I taught two little grandkids how to bike on the trail, it's a safe place. So, I hope a lot of other grandmothers and grandfathers have the same opportunity to get outside with their kids and grandkids and have a great time in Blair County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
Hello, I'm Ashley Gallo. I'm currently a resident of Logan Township. I've been there for about nine years. Before my husband and my family moved to Blair County, we were currently a Huntington County resident, resident family. I was born and raised with the Race Town Lake as my backyard. I built my own trails from my home to Race Town Lake, so I'm all about the trails. An important thing I would see here, like to see here in Blair County, so, is with me living in Logan Township, and I work here in Holidaysburg at the Winds of Modern Orchard. And I would like to see a connection with transportation being possible as far as to and from work, the trails not just being up in the mountains, up in the trees. It would be great to be able to have an e-bike and travel from Altoona to Holidaysburg to my employment and back. As the lady mentioned, it's a big thing with mental health. That's why I love the outdoors. I'm, I've felt one with nature since I was probably born. The importance of linking like the city of Altoona, the trail system within the city, to make it accessible not just up in the mountains, or, that's all great, I want the mountains, I go there too. But for people that are living in the city, commute back and forth to work would be so much easier if there was more bicycle trails, walking trails within the actual city than there is. Because it's not safe to do that currently. I would love to do it, but it would be unrealistic to get on time, to work on time as well with what exists. So, and with that, in creating that, we could also go in with like hubs around the city, Altoona, along the trailway, you know, stop, smell the roses on your way to work. That smells, it sounds and smells amazing to me. So, just putting my two cents in that, don't just think trails up in the wooded areas. We here in the city would like to see some improvements, some changes that would go a long way too, as far as many aspects, even down to businesses, you know? Have the trails going by some of the all-natural stores we have, the local stores, the shops. You know, stop and get your soda on the way to work at a nice little place that sells apple juice, you know? You know, like, just natural stuff. But thank you for your time. I just wanted to let you know that I think it would be important to add the cities into the trail systems as well.
Thank you. I know that, I know that there's been discussion about, you know, there's a development at the Water Authority, which we've mentioned is 15,000 acres, that the Water Authority has graciously opened up for development. I know that, I know that there's discussion on shuttles, how to get people up to the Water Authority, how to get them back. So I know that that's part of the discussion. I also know that it's been brought up here a couple times regarding roads and, and safe passage and, and things like that. You know, those are municipalities, boroughs, that the authority would have to work with, to team up with, to cooperate with, to do that. And I think that's part of the planning part of it. I think that if, if an authority or a group of people can come up with a plan of what they want to do and how they're gonna connect, I, I think that, you know, it seems like what we've heard from most of the boroughs and municipalities, they've been, they've been very supportive. So I think that they would be, they would like to work with people to do this as well, because it's gonna bring people through them, it's gonna make the people in their communities happier. I didn't, I didn't speak to an individual, which I, I didn't realize this. He was up in the horseshoe curve, right now there's trails up there. He said he can go from the horseshoe curve to Tyrone and never go on Blacktop. I just find that fascinating. Yes, sir? Yes, I just find that amazing. And one last thing, and then I'll open it back up to comment, public comment, is that I was in a meeting in downtown Altoona with a, a large group of people regarding trails, and there was a gentleman there, and I forget his name, but he was from the Mellon Foundation in Pittsburgh. And I found that to be strange, that he was there from Pittsburgh, and he was the Mellon Foundation. Him and I started talking, and what captured me was, he's like, we're very interested in what you're doing, because we're looking as a connection from Pittsburgh to Blair County. So, we may look at it as a county, and what can we do to help develop, for all the reasons that we've talked about. But we found it fascinating that there's people, I mean, we have, we have individuals who are from Cambria County that's interested in this. We have people from Pittsburgh that are looking to, to, you know, basically give us money to help with the development, because they look at it as an extension from them. So, when you, when you're on these conversations, a part of these conversations, and you see it being looked at from other people from outside the, the county, you know, and what they see as a benefit is just, is, is fascinating to me. So, and it's encouraging to, to me and us. So I guess that's why we're here to talk about it. So, any other, anyone else have any public comment regarding the trails? Yes, sir?
Can I go twice?
You can. I didn't think we said anything about that, so I think you're good.
I'll get it right this, Randy Green, I live in Logan Township. And, and as Commissioner Kessling just pointed out, something that I, I think might have been missed so far was the, the funding and the financing of trails. And, and I do know Nathan Rigger, I've met with him, I'm following his career in DCNR. He now has a department, he has hundreds of millions of dollars to spend on recreation. Secretary Dunn from DCNR identified recreation as one of her top two priorities for the year. And I know our group and other groups have struggled. We can't go after this money as groups. We need an authority or somebody at the county level to go after that money for us. And I, I think that's a real key thing, bringing that money to this area rather than going somewhere else. And, and again, thanks to ABCD, I don't remember their new name, bringing Nathan to the area a year ago. We're, we're definitely on her, his radar, he knows who we are. And the other component I wanted to point out, and, and you mentioned the Mellon Foundation, I'm affiliated with another trail group in Northwest PA. They had a private company give them $750,000 for trail development. And it, it was the business community that stepped up. They were a company having trouble attracting people to their area, getting the employees they needed. They know that in that part of the, the Pennsylvania, that's what brings people there. And so they made that, that private... And so they made that, that private investment in the trails in that area. And, and I, I believe there's the passion in this area and the support in this area that you can also look to our business community for that kind of support. But particularly with DCNR right now, the funding's there to bring for trails and recreation. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Jerry?
I just want to know, I'm kind of dumb telling you, but the current DCNR grant applications are open now, which however the match is going to be 50, meaning 50% and 50% cash. So if the county will go to a platform, that the county has to come up with that match. I talked with Commissioner Kessling about that via email last week, just to kind of put that out there, that, you know, if we go for the DCD grant, there's a greenways plan, a three days program for recreation, and it's open now, that's a 15% match. I had spoken with Lee at Southern Allegheny's, if we're going to do a countywide effort, and we have to do a plan or you update the current one that's on the books for the greenways, you know, do we ask Blair Alliance, do we ask ABCD Corp., do we ask them for bits and pieces of a match? So the county isn't all in on its own. We spread that amongst the wealth of the county. If it's a countywide effort, then we need, you know, stakeholders to buy in that way. So I just wanted to toss that out there because the cash goes a lot to match back to these kinds of grants, and then the max is 250,000.
Thank you. Uh, with that being said, I do want to, one of the, one of the comments, we had three comments that were not in support, which we will read at some point. And one of them was, don't raise my taxes for trails. We're not looking to do that. The other thing is too, is when we talk about match, that does not mean that the county has to match it. That means that the entity has to come up with a match. So when you hear a match, that doesn't automatically mean that we are the ones that are on the hook to provide the 15, 25, or 50% match. That's, that's the organization needing, that they need to get that, how they get that, either through its business or other partners. So I, I just want to make sure that people understand that. We're not, we're not looking to, for taxpayer dollars, we're not looking to, we're raising taxes for development of, of these things. We, in the last, I would say, I don't know, since we've been starting to, to discuss this, and even at the Altoona Water Authority, there's so many grants that they're getting, and there's so much work that they're doing up there that is, it, we're not, there's no cost to, to us. So we're, again, we're looking at, we're looking at this and we've been discussing it, and we've opened this up because we're, it's what can we do as a county to help? What can we do to, to facilitate this? How can we support this, this initiative and these efforts? And I, you know, and I personally believe that as a county, we have to have a buy-in on it. I think that we have to show that our support for doing this, for all the reasons it's been discussed here today. You know, the mental health of our, of our citizens, the ability to get out and exercise, you know, is very important to us, in addition to the economic part of it, and in, in addition to the bed tax, again, which is money that come in from outside of this area, so it doesn't impact us on, on taxes. I think all those are, are good things. So any other comment at all? Mr. Hurd? Mr. Hurd will be retiring this year. I'm not sure he'll go away, but he'll retire.
I might. My name is Joe Hurd, and I'm here kind of on behalf of the Transportation Committee. We've already, of the chamber, we've already had a couple of people from that committee make comments. And I hadn't planned to make any comments either until you made, uh, the, you made everybody aware of the fact that there are people that will not be happy if any county money is spent in any way to, you know, enhance our recreation and to, to build and grow the trails. And I think that's a very unfortunate thing. If you looked at the people that are here today and heard what they had to say, it would seem like a slam dunk. Everybody in the county is, is very, very happy about the possibility of doing things that enhance recreation and grow our trails. We know that's not true. We know that the minute a penny is spent on, of tax money on trails or anything that may, and I, and I disagree with you, that you'll never have to raise taxes as the result of anything associated with this. You, you need to invest in this county. When we look, you know, the argument will be that people will say, you know, our pension's a mess, we, we have to take care of that, we need a new prison, we've got all this stuff to do. And, and there's no doubt about that. But where is that money going to come from to ultimately do those things? Where is the new money coming in that will take us to where we need to be financially? My contention is that we, we, we not only, you know, they, they'll tell us we can't afford it. Honestly, I think we can't afford not to do it. What other opportunities are there to bring people in here to create additional revenue? If we don't have those, then those pensions and prison and the, the rest of the stuff, how are we going to offset that? Where is the new money coming from? This is an opportunity that, to take advantage of, of so many wonderful, God-given things that we have here and to offset so many of the things that we need to do as a county beyond things like recreation. I don't know whether that made any sense. You mentioned I'm retiring and, you know? Mental health is, my friend Carol Danenberg pointed it out, and not to make light of anything that she said, but I'd like to be here for another several years and be cognizant of all the great things that are going on here and will go on here as the result of people, like the people behind me.
I agree. I, I don't know that I said that we would never. What I am trying to do is dispel the notion that people in some of the comments that we have feel that we're going to raise taxes to help this. It's, you know, and I've talked about here about a buy-in. I think the county has to have a buy-in to some degree. Obviously, that's a budget issue. That's something that we have to look forward to and budget money and set money aside. I also agree with you, we have, we have major projects that we are faced with, this board is faced with, that we're going to want, we're the ones that it's finally, it's going to, it's in our lap to do something with. But I also agree with you, when I talked about a buy-in, is it, when you look at the financial, just the financial portion of this, if we're able to develop, in my opinion, if we're able to develop trails that people want to come to, then there's your new money. Your new money's going to come in in bed tax and, you know, development for, you know, people having kayak rentals and, you know, renting bikes and things like that. So I think, I think they both complement one another. So to say that we're never going to raise taxes for trails, if, if you thought I said that, I, I'm not saying that. What I am saying is, when we start talking about this initially and we get some of this, people seem to think that, you know, in addition to, we're going to be raising taxes. And what, what we found is, right now, there's so much good going on and so much being developed with grants, and, and I think that's the part I want to highlight, is there's a lot of money that's being dedicated by the state, by the federal government right now, that in my opinion only, we'd be foolish not to enhance that and see what we can do. So, you know, may we at some point match? Sure. But again, it's a, it's a budgetary issue. We would need an authority, we would need people to tell us, hey, look, this is what we're looking for, this is what we're doing. We would need to, you know, to cooperate with the planning commission to say, hey, look, there's a grant out there, these are going to be the grants coming up and stuff like that. So, so I guess I agree with you with that.
Nobody ever does.
I, I know, and that's what scares me, but...
It should.
But I think that, you know, I think we're saying the same things, maybe just in a different way. But I do agree, I think that we do have to have a buy-in, I absolutely do agree, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Nelson, resident of Duncanville. This is my outdoor recreation hat, and it has something that Commissioner Burke said about the waterways. I was sitting here the, the whole public testimony time, and I didn't hear one comment about waterways. Waterways, your trail is already built, and you can do that. And I, I, to illustrate where I think like, the direction you're going is a, a great direction with an authority, is that have somebody that can tie all these loose ends and, and different groups together. But a great example is the Boat Commission. We haven't heard the Boat, Fish and Boat Commission, we heard the fishing part of it, but the Boat Commission has a program where if a nonprofit can work with kayaking and taking people down the river, it's a possibility to do that. I know we, we put in a launch area over at Nature Works Parks, and there's different areas, but they're being underutilized. I think the waterway trail is something that, that the authority that could look into, work with the, the Boat Commission. So I'm kind of speaking on behalf of the River Rats today. My earlier outdoor, I, I spent time in North Carolina and Colorado, and those, those rivers, the guiding outfits, the rafting outfits, there's some real possibility here. So I just wanted to, when I heard the waterways, that trail is built, and I think we can better utilize that. So on behalf of the River Rats, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Yes, sir, in the back.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Pat Bakely, I'm a resident of Holidaysburg. And I want to advocate for creating this committee. Three years ago, I rode the entire 9/11 Memorial Trail. I don't know if you're familiar with how it works, but basically, all these communities have all these rail trails connected together, and you have to travel sometimes across cities or across highways to get to these different places. And along these trails, I have met so many people that were like, from all kinds of different areas. They were out of state, coming there to travel long distances. It was a great experience to travel, you know, for days and days at a time. We all spent money, we were camping, we're staying in hotels, we're going to museums and things like that. But I think that the, and like other people have talked about, riding is healthy, is spiritual, but, and the worst part of the whole trip was being on the highways and having to travel, you know, alongside traffic. Imagine trying to go from Union Town to, you know, Alexandria to get on the next trail. You know, these are the kind of things that we need to solve here, and I think it's very important, you know, to connect, you know, from Holidaysburg to the Lauer Trail, to Gap Trail, to the Ghost Town Trail, you know, all these things should be connected together. And I, I just want to say that from all the different places I've, I've been, we are so far behind everybody else, you know, considering the types of trails that they have, the safety features, the, you know, the wide berms on the roads when you can't go from place to place, at least you have marked, you know, bicycle trails. You have, other places have beautiful crossings, the traffic slows down and stops when bicycles cross the road. I think that, you know, we have a lot to learn and a long way to go, you know, to, to compete with all these other places. And, and once we get that kind of thing going here, we'll be also competitive to bring more, you know, young people into the area, more people to come here as a, you know, place that has, you know, great recreation. So I think, I encourage you to continue with this authority and do whatever you can to complete the 9/11 Trail and to complete other trails in this area.
Thank you. Any other comment?
No, I, again, I would echo, thank you all for coming. It was an overwhelming response, and I think maybe more than we were expecting, honestly. We knew there was a lot of interest, but it's been really interesting to hear, you know, all the different perspectives. And I know taking your time out of the day to be here shows how important it is to you. I don't know, we want, if we have additional discussion back and forth or how we exactly are going to proceed, but I think from my perspective, it's been something that, you know, I've supported, I am a user of particularly the Lauer Trail and the Six to Ten Trail. But I definitely see the value in, you know, connecting everything and making a network and making it something where we're not all just stuck in our cars, because that is really what a lot of, you know, people are looking for. And one thing I did take away from my last Southern Alleghenies Planning and Development Commission meeting was that we are somewhat unique here because the trails are so close to us. You know, even though we may be sitting here complaining, oh, I have to drive all the way to Flowing Springs to park and get on the trail, that's actually not that far compared to what a lot of people in a lot of cities are dealing with. So we're lucky in that respect, and we can make things even closer. We can make things even better. So, and that's kind of my perspective. I think for me, it, you know, I've always been supportive, it's just kind of the method of how we, how logistically do we get there? Because I think it's clear that we do need kind of a central point, you know, an entity that's able to, to go after the grants that aren't available for private entities. So that's all I have to say at this point.
I have lived here most of my life, which is a long time. And I'm not even quite as old as Joe, but pretty close. But I think that, I, my belief is that we've been concentrating on, during this discussion, on making Blair County a destination for others to come, and that's wonderful, but I think we need to make it a life destination as well, where we do really focus on bringing folks here. We lose a lot of our young people, they go elsewhere and never come back. We need to make this area more welcoming and available with things that they want to do. And of course, trails are a very big part of that. So I think that, you know, blur, destination Blair County, maybe that needs to be a new slogan somewhere one of our organizations can use. I personally support the idea of making some sort of a, what? What? You're not talking to me? Okay. I, I personally think that we should have some sort of an authority to do this because that's really the only way we're going to qualify for any kind of funding. And I do advocate that instead of raising general fund taxes, that we look at the, maybe a redistribution of the hotel tax, something like that to use for our, our matches, and also asking the businesses to, to chip in. Of course, we are constantly hounding our businesses, and they're, they've been very generous to us here in Blair County. So we, hopefully, they'll, they'll be interested in this as well. But I, I think that the main point of today was, is, is everybody in agreement that an authority would be a good way to go? And I see all these heads shaking yes, and the comments that we got were the same. So I think that we will certainly discuss that and certainly keep that in mind as we, as we go further. I also advocate that, and I said this earlier, that we have a representative from each of the various trails, because there are so many different ones in, in the area. I think connecting everybody is, is a very vital part of this whole project. So thank you all for coming, and it was great hearing all your comments and seeing you
I'm going to, we, since we ended at 2:30, we still have a little bit of time. I'm going to go ahead and start reading all of the correspondence that was received. So if you'd like to stay and hear them, that's fine, if not, we certainly understand. For those who stay, thank you. For those who are leaving, thank you for coming and taking time out of your day, we greatly appreciate it. We want you to know, all of us from the Board of Commissioners appreciate your, your voice, and this is what's been very helpful to us to help make a decision. As I'd stated early on, we had three, we had three correspondents that were not in support of this. I, I'm not going to read the names. The first one was, we, it was said that these trails are a waste of money, and that was it. The second correspondence we had was, I'm a citizen of Blair County and also an avid mountain bike enthusiast, however, I'm also a taxpayer in the county who just learned of tax increase imposed by Blair County commissioners. That said, I would respectfully ask that we not spend any more taxpayer money on things we don't need. As an adult, we daily have to choose between our needs and our wants and right now... As an adult, we daily have to choose between our needs and our wants, and right now, spending any money we absolutely don't need is fiscally irresponsible. The last comment and the negative that we received, this is just foul of you to not give credit to these actually putting in the work. You should be ashamed of yourself. They are great people who are doing great things, and an article you wrote was lacking. The writers, the work, not the politicians. Why you ignore that says a lot. Sorry to see what happened in journalism. It's not to reiterate what you're told to say. Disappointed. Thank you for your time. Consider journalism over trends. So anyway.
Sorry. I don't either.
Those were the, those were the negative, those were the negative comments. Like I said, we have 25 in support. Absolutely, Matt, please.
Well, this is official. I'm Matt Fox with ABCD Corp., and also a Blair County resident. I just wanted to point out some of the things that Amy had said and everyone else here in the back about retaining the people that are here, the people that are growing up here. I have six kids, five grandkids. So I think part of this authority and the other parts too need to recognize that a lot of people here don't realize what we already have, whether or not you connect them or not, the ability to know whether or not they're even here. So I know that Mark, as I said, Explore Altoona and all the individual groups do a great job of saying what they do. Everyone that goes and uses the Lauer Trail, you know, 6 to 10 Trail, they may not be aware of Bell's Gap Trail is down in Bellwood, the connectivity that's already going on, the great work that the snowmobile group is doing in a short drive to Amy's, Amy to Laura's point rather, you know, in 15 or 20 minutes from anywhere in Blair County, you probably get to some trails that you don't use or don't even know about. So I just want to stress to this authority, I know it's not the Commissioners that are going to be the authority, that a lot of this is also, if everybody's coming here, I'm out of town. I mean, we say this all the time about economic development, jobs, about the places and the things that are here. The people that live here, when someone comes out of town and says, hey, I'm here to visit the Gap Trail, and they're like, I have no idea what you're talking about, right? That's, so part of this education is about how we can educate everyone locally. And then there's a study being done by Southern Alleghenies Planning and Development Commission. A lot, one of those items is accessibility to the trails. Some of that is, you know, the whole points of it, you know, the trailheads, you know, whether it's disabilities or not. The other part is connecting the people to it. So groups like Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and all of that just needs to be in, you know, so if the people residents locally don't know about it, that's another bigger problem as well. We face the same thing with economic development towards, and you want to, if you are coming in for a certain reason, if the local people don't know what's already going on here and why it's so great, that's why they look a lot of times to other places that are advertising, the Asheville, North Carolinas, the West Virginia Trails, right, the Happy McCoy Trails. If we have them here, the people don't know, part of this has to be as we build them and we advertise it. So, sorry.
Good point. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, it's Emily again. I just want to jump on that, because I noticed in my position as the community engagement specialist, that there is a trend around Blair County, as there is no overhaul marketing for everything that we do and what we do. Lancaster has come visit Lancaster, and it's everything. I mean, and Explore Altoona does a great job, but there's a level that we're missing, so many things that aren't a part of Explore Altoona and other institutions. Even Arts Altoona does a great job. There are a lot of niche, you know, marketing opportunities, but there's not this overarching branch for everything. Active Altoona is another great community calendar, but I would advise if we are going to move forward with this, that there is a trail website with every trail in Blair County, whether it's water, bike, hike, et cetera. And even the water authorities, like social media, could cover all of these trails, and we push, you know, the citizens to look into that social media and website to understand everything. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Letter in support we received from Allegheny Township Supervisors, which would be David Birchfield, Fred Immler, and Joseph Hartice. Ladies and gentlemen, as with a great enthusiasm, we offer our support for the creation of county authority to oversee the trails and recreational areas of Blair County. In April of 2019, the Allegheny Township Board of Supervisors provided a letter to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation in support of the Altoona Water Authority getting a grant to acquire additional watershed lands in the Catanin Point location. Some of the proposed use of these lands were to create hiking and cycling trails in the, in an area for horseback riding for Blair County residents to enjoy. Again, we offer our strong support for an authority which would implement the development of such outdoor recreation initiatives. Should you have any questions or concerning, concerns on our position or involvement with this project, kindly contact us. We received a letter from Keller Engineers. On behalf of Keller Engineers, I would like to express our support for recreational trail development in Blair County. We believe properly developing recreational projects creates community enjoyment while preserving natural beauty and protecting the environment. Our team understands the importance of recreational infrastructure plays in serving communities by supporting the quality of life of residents and visitors and attracting investment. As a business, we know the recreational opportunities are key in attracting new talent to the area and retaining existing employees. The Region's 2018 Comprehensive Plan identified recreational amenities and natural assets as a critical issue. Developing new and expanding existing recreational amenities will greatly benefit the community and positively address this issue. We received a letter from the Blair County Alliance by Steve McKnight, President and CEO. On behalf of the Board of Directors of Blair County Alliance, to business economic growth, I would like to convey our strong support for trails, trail development, potential role for county in support of guide those efforts. Outdoor recreation assets such as trails, parks, waterways, a shared roadway are generally considered public or civil spaces. Their value and recognition for attracting and retaining people and new investment to a community has grown in years. This is especially true post-pandemic. Unlike private sector destinations and amusements, trails are generally developed, promoted, and maintained through volunteer efforts and occasional grant funding or private donations. With increased demand for trails and trail development, municipal governments are incorporating and expanding these assets into management and oversight operations. Availability and use of trails provide a positive economic impact and return in development and maintenance. The opportunity for Blair County to become a true outdoor recreation destination is tremendous. Already, the 6 to 10 Trail and the Lauer Trail are popular destinations. Adding additional trails and trail connectivity will increase opportunities for both day and multi-day experiences for residents, visitors, and residents alike. Communities like Asheville, North Carolina, and Connelesville, PA have developed and leveraged their trail and outdoor assets over the past several decades. They and other trail towns like them now attract people from across the country for overnight stays, often turning visitors into permanent residents and investors. They often cite trails and outdoor recreation experience as the reason to locate to a community. As you have recognized, new trail planning and development is underway here in Blair County. The implementation of the 9/11 Trail will utilize the existing 6 to 10 Trail system, moving through Dunkinsville, Holidaysburg, and ultimately connecting to the Lauer Trail with connections to Canoe Creek and beyond to trails, trailheads in neighboring Huntington County. He was very lengthy. Another trail is the planning phases above the Horseshoe Curve on the Allegheny Plateau. The land is owned by the Altoona Water Authority, the city of Altoona. The parcel represents one of the largest locally municipally controlled land in Pennsylvania. The project is in support of the city of Altoona, the Altoona Water Authority, along with the Pennsylvania Environment Council and the RK Mellon Foundation. The PEC is helping to fund the trail mapping process and providing technical trail building assistance. That is going on as we speak. Once completed, the Horseshoe Curve Trail could be one of the largest continuous trail systems in the east, rivaling the nationally recognized Alagripus Trail Network located adjacent to Laystown, Lake Raystown. The trail attracts thousands of users and major events each year. Blair County Trail Development will help us link and cross-promote Alagripus with the neighboring trailheads like Cambria County's Ghost Town, Rock Roth, and Center County, and the Top Trail in Bedford. Multiple trail destinations allow for multiple day experiences, increased hotel stays, and overnight spending. Outdoor recreation not only represents a key economic sector that we can cultivate and grow here in Blair County, creating direct jobs and economic impact, it also enhances our quality of place, community health, and is a key attraction for new residents and investors. That is why the Pennsylvania has created an Office of Outdoor Recreation, demonstrating a statewide commitment to funding and technical assistance for trail and trail development. Southern Alleghenies Planning and Development Commission is also leading a study documenting the overall current impact on outdoor businesses have on local economy. That study should be released shortly. Trails and outdoor recreation economy are important to the community and part of our public domain. Trails attract people and investment to communities. They promote good physical and mental health. Trust that the Alliance has been and will continue to promote the first frontier Blair County as authentic mountain community, one that values outdoors as key parts of our culture and our way of life. By planning, investing in trail development, we create revolving and sustainable return on investment. I think that was the lengthiest one. We received another one, says, I'm writing in support of a statue in the trail system. In addition to the obvious benefits of community trail systems, such as improved health and well-being of citizens, we use the trails in preservation of green space and natural landscapes. A trail system can be an important economic boom to the community. Trails provide recreational opportunities for visitors, potentially increase the number of visitors and length of their stay to the benefit of the local businesses and restaurants. In addition, a trail system may encourage new businesses to locate to the community and are an attractive amenity to new residents as well. An excellent start to the trail in Holidaysburg would be from Legion Park to Canal Basin on the Nature Works Park, with an additional spur from Legion to Dunkinsville Memorial Park in the future. I have a letter here from the founder and current president of Glendale Lakes Snowmobile Club. I'm very interested in recreational trail systems in Blair County on water authority grounds. A trail around Horseshoe Curve and surrounding area would be well-received project by the public, I believe. Having a multi-use, year-round trail system that would bring tourism dollars into local economy, mountain bike and e-bike sales are going up everywhere, and our region holds a large number of snowmobile owners that would benefit from this trail. We have a trail system in Prince Colletson and a connector to trail to Black Machanan State Park. The wildlife, especially deer, use these trails a lot. Most wild animals take the path of least resistance to go from bedding to feeding areas, so the benefits of the trail systems are not just for the people, but the ecosystem. I don't know if I'm mountain biking. I don't want to run into one of them, but. That one's from Cambria County, so. Said, my wife and I use the rails to trails as much as possible. We 100% support this initiative, and thank you for trying this initiative. I'm writing with some comments about recreational trails in Blair County. I read in the Altoona Mirror that there are a meeting about the topic, but given the meeting is being held in the middle of the workday, I'm unable to attend. This county has some, has some great trails, but the locate, they're located in low population areas between 90% plus of the county's population are required to drive a vehicle to make use of them. I'd like to see more urban trails and interconnect, interconnections between the trails that we have. A trail connection downtown Holidaysburg with downtown Altoona would be amazing and surely would drive economic growth. I ride a route from Holidaysburg to the Lauer Trail and requires a one-mile stretch along a busy narrow Route 120, Route 22. This section could be avoided if White Bridge was reopened pedestrian and bike traffic. In fact, if that were somehow doable, we'd have a very low traffic route between the downtown Holidaysburg and Williamsburg. I know this is a long shot, but it should at least be considered. Repairing the White Bridge for this purpose is a heck of a lot cheaper than a tunnel. And just to add to that, we've had numerous people reach out to all of us here on the board about the White Bridge, and we are looking at options. And I was very glad to hear that Frankstown is willing to also assist or even take over. So, you know, we just don't want that to, like, we're not doing anything with it. We are behind the scenes trying to figure this, that part of it out as a pedestrian biking bridge. Good morning. I just saw on WTGA segment, and the possibility of trail systems near Horseshoe Curve, and I think it's an awesome idea. This would make a great addition to local rails and trails in Canoe Creek. I'd like to advocate for the expansion of the Horseshoe Trail System. Yep, that's from Cambria County. I apologize.
They want to connect to it.
They do. I saw the story regarding the proposal trail system to water authority near Horseshoe Curve. I think it's a wonderful idea. Our area already has, already has a reputation for rails and trails of bike, and this would expand biking opportunities even further, both to current bikers, new bikers, and more adventurous bikers. The closest mountain bike trail system that I'm aware of is Raystown. I think it would serve as an effective cross-promotion marketing of activities. This individual said, you have my support on this great idea. Our area seems to be last in pedestrian biking friendly areas. I have been cycling Blair County for 60 years. I see a strong need for safe passage between Tyrone and Roaring Springs. It would be well-used with the types of bikes now available. Currently, it's very scary and dangerous commuting in this area. I lost a very close friend June of 20, June 1, 2016, on Route 220 near Bellwood. It shouldn't be. It would lessen the traffic on the roads. I'm a resident of Blair County in Altoona, Pennsylvania. I want to voice my opinion on the subject for recreational trails. I feel that it would be positive for the community to be able to enjoy a broader bike trail in the area to, able to explore, and also for others to join in and come into the area and bring more tourist opportunities for individuals who love sports and enjoy mountain biking. I know myself included, when I heard the news, I was excited and found a positive improvement for the community. I should have brought water. I am Nicholas Rollin, oops, I'm sorry. I live in Garber Street. I bike about 2,000 miles a year. I ride the roads and every trail I can find. I like to leave directly from my house when I can, but have driven with some regularity, some distances to find new and different trails. I support development of any biking infrastructure here in Center County. Our weather is wonderful. Natural beauty in the area should be celebrated. Biking is a good way to draw outside folks. I know that we have to travel to bike. It's fun to find a place to grab a beer and eat something. As an avid snowmobiler, I travel to New York to ride the trail systems. I see no reason a trail system cannot be developed in Pennsylvania, starting with the Blair County. There is ample space in unused and underdeveloped areas that this could take place. An economic impact has many ripple effects, from lodging to parts of repairs, restaurants, and the list goes on. Please support, please consider supporting the trail system. As a lifelong Blair County resident, I think this area could greatly benefit from the most expansive and connected trail system. Not only would it increase local outdoor recreation, it would also provide for actual practical destinations instead of just riding and walking a few miles to a dead end. Many people cycle this area, whether for exercise, enjoyment, or essential mode of transportation. This area has poor infrastructure on roads for cyclists. My husband and I ride our bikes on area roads and try to be as safe as possible, but it's at a risk, little to no shoulder, bike lanes, distracted drivers, and speeding. As a vehicle becomes more expensive and unaffordable, people are looking for other options to get to work and run errands. Others would enjoy riding to another location, stopping for coffee or lunch, attending an outdoor event. I hope that you will lead this county and be more inclusive in support of this, in This email is to voice support for the Lauer Trail being extended through Holidaysburg and beyond to the 6 to 10 Trail, trails such as the Lauer, increase and create new economic opportunities for rural areas. The extension and connection of existing, existing trails to create a longer trail can multiply the effect through increased total use. A prime example is a Greater Allegheny Passage or Gap Trail that runs through, from Pittsburgh, PA to Cumberland, Maryland, where it connects with the Chesapeake Bay and Ohio Trail that runs to Washington, DC. Formerly shorter trails, as it grew in length, so did the opportunity for longer use and provide economic opportunities for more small businesses along its combined paths, such as the River Edge Cafe, B&amp;B, among others, similar small businesses in the Confluence area. I anticipate extending Lauer Trail would bring more business, for example, Belly Buster Sports Grill in Williamsburg Creamy, Creamery in Williamsburg, and Alexandria, the Holidaysburg, to create opportunities in small business. And with that, if I could just have a second. Thank you. I want to express my opinion about adding mountain bike "I want to express my opinion about adding mountain bike trails to the Horseshoe Curve. I think it's the best idea for nature and sporting add-on to this area. My friends and family are mountain bike riders and would certainly utilize these trails. Sidewalks and bike paths in Altoona and surrounding areas seem to be rare to none. This would also make for a safer option opposed to riding along streets." This one says, "Rails to trail is good for your health. I've lost 170 pounds." That will help with the help of the trail and would benefit more if people were on it. Uh, it would be nice for more people to can enjoy, enjoy it. "I am writing in voice in support of the recreational trails in the county. We need to encourage people to get and enjoy the refreshing, refreshment only time in open spaces can bring to us. Participating in longer walks, longer hikes, even brief meditative strolls in the woods allow for the human spirit to find serenity and healing from the sense of woundedness, often brought on by the recruits and experienced too easily in our society. It would be amazing to have trails designated for walking and bicycling, bicycling, cross-country skiing in winter, as well as for horses and areas for ATVs and snowmobiles. We have some rails converted to trails, but there are more of those spaces available and more conversation. Let's get off the asphalt and into mother nature." "Please support and help fund hiking, biking trails in Blair County. Connecting the Lauer Trail, Flowing Springs and Six to Ten Trail to Dunkin, Dunkinsville would be a boom to Holidaysburg business and make Blair County a bigger part of the national 9/11 Trail System. Humans need to connect with nature and having such places or recreational trails nearby is healthy, inspiring us as good businesses. Please help with the funding of the Lauer Trail extension in Holidaysburg. We drive from Latrobe and love this trail. It would be a great, if it were longer, and not have to go as far to start. These trails definitely have an economic impact on towns along the trail. Look at the Gap and CNO bring people and money into those towns. We usually stop at ice cream places and bakeries near the trails." Ladies and gentlemen, that is all of the pros and cons that was received here by the Board of Commissioners. You know, we, we started down this path or trail. We, we didn't know what kind of response we would get. And for me, I would like to say it's been overwhelming. It's heartwarming. There's a lot of very passionate people in this community and we see a lot of support for this initiative. So I think that, I think we've all kind of agreed that this initiative would be a very positive initiative for Blair County and the citizens of Blair County for many, many reasons. So we will look forward to bringing this up at a Commissioners' meeting for a vote. Thank you very much for attending.